Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the St. Peter School Board, Monday night, April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We're here in the Governor's Room. About six thirty-three P. M., we will call the meeting to order. First item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will consider and adopt the agenda for tonight.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion, any additions?
Yes.
If not, we'll vote to approve. All those in favor of adopting the agenda saying?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is adopted, thank you. Sarah, do we have any requests to speak? No, all right. If you do wish to speak, make sure you fill out a card and give it to Sarah, but we have now passed that point on the agenda, so, sorry. Next up is the approval of the consent agenda items. You will find all the details in your board book packet in the packet in front of you. Questions, comments, anything on the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda items.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion items or things to point out on the agenda? All right, hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Consent agenda has been approved. Next up is the student spotlight from South Elementary. This is Elke. Please bring up your superstars.
Well, good evening, and I have some wonderful representatives from South Elementary. Each time we're asked to bring students, I have to really think, because we have a lot of amazing kids at South, but these two first graders came to my mind very easily, and then the staff also provides some input, and these are just two students who always go above and beyond to do their very best, they're wonderful friends, and they just do an excellent example of showing Star Pride, which is our PBIS program at South. So I have with me tonight Amelia Atkinson, and she is here with her parents, Ashley and Marius, and she also has her three-week-old sister Jade and her three-year-old brother Jeremiah, and you brought grandpa and grandma as well. What's their names?
Kathy and Tom.
Kathy and Tom, so welcome to you, too. And she is a first grader in Mrs. Borchardt's first grade room. And I also have Shay Drinkall, and Shay is here with his mom, Joy, and his dad isn't here, but his name is Josh, and he has a sister Lily in college, a brother Reese, who's nine, and he is a first grader in Ms. Welter's classroom. Are you guys ready to share what Star Pride is all about?
Yes.
All right, we practiced this morning, and I told them they didn't have to remember what they told me this morning, that it's okay, they can just wing it. So we'll see where we go. It's always open mic, that's all. So, let's start by talking about the four pillars of Star Pride, which are respect, responsibility, being safe, and being kind. So you know what, we're going to let you start, Shay, by telling us, what does it mean to show respect?
So, respect is like...
If you're with your friends on the playground, how can you show respect?
Ooh, if one, if one, if one friend wants to play this game and you want to play this game, then you play your friend's game first, and then you can play that, your game.
Yeah, you just kind of work things out, right? That's the respectful thing to do. How do we show respect to teachers?
Um, you don't just shout out her name, you just, you raise your hand.
Because we want everyone to feel like you're a part of our classroom, right?
Mm-hmm.
Wonderful, and how about, how do we show responsibility, Amelia?
Um, every single, every single day bring your backpack and your water bottle.
Right, there's things that we need to have so that we can be ready to learn, that's one way. How do we show it in the classroom, say during daily five? There are some ways that you show that you are responsible.
To be quiet, because the teacher's working with other friends.
Right, and that's a time that they rotate around during reading time, so that the teacher can get a chance to work with each small group, right? And if everyone does their job, we can all get things done, right?
Yep.
All right, the next one is safe. We need to be safe, we want everyone safe. What's something that you do at recess to keep people safe, Shay?
Um, you don't climb up the slides.
All right, because we do not want people, we've learned that one the hard way sometimes, haven't we? Yeah. And how about in the lunchroom?
Um, you stay seated.
Stay seated, and what else do we have to remember?
Um...
Drop food, what do we have to do?
Just raise your hand and ask for more napkins, so you can clean it up.
Sometimes we clean it up, or we need to get Mr. Nate to help us clean it up, too. Wonderful. And the last pillar that we have is kindness. So Amelia, what are some ways that you show kindness at South? I see you doing it every day. How about on the playground with someone?
If someone doesn't have a hula hoop or jump rope or something, and you have one, and there's no more left, you can give them that, and then they can take turns.
Right, and you know what? You are like the hula hoop queen, aren't you?
Mm-hmm.
I was watching her, she is pretty amazing. I was out at the playground last week, and more than one day, I saw you hula hooping, and you were doing a fantastic job. She makes it look so easy. I didn't try it, though.
No.
Um, and now our next question is, is what is your favorite thing to do at school, Shay?
Daily five and recess.
And what's so great about daily five?
Um, because I get to do Alexia.
Okay, we like that. And it's pretty obvious why recess is so great.
Yeah, you just get to play.
You get to play, it's wonderful. And Amelia, what are your favorite?
Math time and imagination station.
And tell them, what do you like to do in the imagination station?
Um, probably do art.
The art projects, she's pretty creative. All right, and when you are not in school, Shay, you're going to make him all the way up by the mic, why don't you tell him what do you like to do when you're not at school?
Um, do sports, baseball, basketball, and football.
Right, and so it's no surprise, what do you want to be when you grow up?
Um, an MLB player.
Yeah, no pressure. But he's got his future planned, don't you? And how about you, Amelia? What do you like to do when you're not in school?
I like to help mom with Jade and play with my little brother Jeremiah.
All right, and I already confirmed with them that she's a pretty big helper at home. I would imagine she would be. And Amelia, what do you want to be when you grow up?
Doctor.
A doctor, and why do you think that would be great?
So that I can help people.
Then you've already started doing that, haven't you?
Mm-hmm.
The path was set itself, so, continue to watch these, too, because you know what, there's some fantastic kids who have the great, great future ahead, so we're so proud of them at South, and they really are great examples. Thanks for joining. Any questions for them?
I do have a question. How did you like being up here? Is it kind of okay?
Yeah.
They said they were a little nervous this, this morning, but it doesn't show. Shay, Shay told me he was nervous. What did I tell you?
Um, they, it's, so you're going to be saying it with me, so then I shouldn't be...
Right here, and I wasn't going to ask you anything hard. Did I keep my promise?
Yeah.
Oh, good. All right. Thank you for having us, and thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good reminder that the future is bright. Yep. Awesome. All right, thank you, Mrs. Elke. All right, next up are action items. We have several things to consider, to talk about and to approve, or to consider for approval. The first is considering a resolution approving adult basic, the Adult Basic Education Consortium.
Hi, everyone.
How are you?
I'm doing well. Thanks for the opportunity to be here tonight. Before we look at the consortium agreement, I thought I'd just give you a little bit of an update about Adult Basic Ed. For those of you who are new to the board, just so that you know, the, the goal of Adult Basic Ed is really to help people gain the educational skills that they need to either transition into a post-secondary option, or to learn the skills that lead them to new or better employment. And our area Adult Learning Consortium consists of school districts from Gibbon, Fairfax, Winthrop, La Sourd, Henderson, St. Peter, Tri-City United, Sibley East, Nicklet, Cleveland, Wasika, Jamesville, Waldorf, Pemberton, New Richland, Heartland, Ellendale, Geneva, Waterville, Elysian, Morristown, and then the law enforcement centers of Nicklet County and La Sourd County. And we have a coordinator who is from La Sourd, his name is Nate Warden, and he and his teaching staff do a really good job of accomplishing these goals. In our classes, adults can work towards getting their high school diploma, or their GED, which is the General Education Diploma. They can learn English, improve basic skills in literacy and math, and also prepare for post-secondary education. They can also work on studying to prepare for the citizenship test. And this year, we were able to expand our offerings. We have created several online classes. We've also added another class in the community center, and we are serving adults at the Islamic Center on Saturdays. We're able to do some of this through funds from the Good Neighbor Diversity Council. They help with offering funds to purchase some Chromebooks and pay for some hotspots, which will allow more people to attend online classes. We also received funding to help offset the cost of transportation for some individuals. So we can provide transportation to and from the community center with the transit bus. This has been a real boost for our program in being able to do different things. We've also seen an increase in the number of local businesses who have been recommending that their employees take our classes. So we know that people are recognizing just the value of education. Along with helping adults, our staff also works with high school students to help them earn the recovery credits that they need to be able to graduate with their peers. And I thought it'd be interesting for you to know what countries we are serving people from. So we have students from Djibouti, Ethiopia, Ghana, Guatemala, Honduras, Kenya, Mexico, Samoa, Somalia, and Thailand. And the primary languages that are spoken by our adult learners are Somali, Spanish, Arabic, and Thai, and then, of course, English as well. This year, we have two adults who will receive their high school diploma, and we have two who have completed the citizenship preparation test, and then also become citizens, so that's pretty exciting. Just to note, when we have students, when we have adult learners that get their high school diploma, that means that for every credit that they need to make up, they actually need to fulfill what a current high school student has to do. So it's the number of seat hours, all the same requirements, and so when you think about an adult having to do that, a person who likely has children, a family, some of them working two jobs, this is a huge commitment, and it can take years for people to achieve this. So it's a great accomplishment, I think. And I wanted to invite you to our commencement service that will be held on Thursday, June twenty-second, at six o'clock here in the community center, and it'll be located in the senior center. It's a really good event to attend if you're able to, it's one of my favorites. Not only are we celebrating with these students, but we get to see all of their families, and the people that have made sacrifices so that their family members can come and attend classes. If you'd like to look at the agreement, this agreement is a more condensed version of what we've had in the previous years, but the services that are provided by the consortium, and then our responsibilities remain the same. It's just saying the same information with less words, but if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer those. Charlie?
Thanks for this information, Tammy. So how, how do the services get promoted within these communities?
Sure.
Is it through primarily community ed offerings? Is it, do we share it in other places? Like, how do people know about it?
Right, and so it's through community ed. We have it in our brochure. We also share information in our district highlights. We've put posters. Sometimes we have had staff that go around and do door hangers in locations where we know that there are pockets of people that would benefit from our services. And also, word of mouth. I would say word of mouth is probably one of the best ways that we advertise, because if we have a student that finds great success, they're more willing to share that with their friends, or we have an employer that sent someone to our classes and it really made a big difference in their employee, they're more likely to encourage others to attend.
Awesome, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Tammy. So this is a resolution to approve the consortium agreement. If there are no other questions, we'll proceed to do the resolution. This is a roll call. Correct? Do we approve a resolution?
Motion to move the resolution approving Adult Basic Education Consortium.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will do a roll call vote. Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Mr. Wilkins, Gary?
Aye.
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 Resolution is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is to consider revisions to the fiscal year twenty-three budget. Mr. Ragnar? Mr. Grunson?
Hello. This is an annual thing, as we've done, you know, it's pretty much every year we revise the budget. If you remember, typically in June of each year, we'll, we'll approve, or the adopted budget gets approved, and then during the year, we work on revising the budget. As, as we all know, a lot of things change during the year with, with school finances, and this year is probably more so than any other with all the COVID funds and other things shifting around. We did go over this at length last week at the Finance Committee meeting, or Business Committee meeting, and I'll try and give you a little bit shortened version of it, but ask questions and, and go through the things. There's basically two pages in your packet that summarize hundreds of lines of budget items, and I'd like to thank Behong from our office did a lot of work helping me put this together during the last couple of months. I guess it's, it takes quite a bit of time to revise this. It's actually probably a little bit more in-depth than the adopted budget. But if we maybe want to start on page, I think it's thirty-five in your packet, it's the one that has all the funds listed. It's basically lines one through eighty-one. I think probably the easiest way to start, as, as we've talked in the past, and you're all aware of, there's a lot of different funds in school accounting, and they all go for different purposes. Maybe, I'd like to usually start at the bottom and work our way up, because those are a little easier to explain and are kind of complicated, and then we'll get to the general fund unassigned, which is the bulk of the items. If we start on line eighty-one, or, I guess it's actually line seventy-four through seventy-seven, that's a new fund that you've seen in the past. It's Fund Twenty, and the purpose for that is, if you remember, we went to self-insurance last year, and because the health, we've always been self-insured with dental, but with the health insurance is a lot larger, so it's material now, so we, our auditors wanted to split us out. Basically, there's two components to that, and that's the reserve for our dental and health insurance funds. In column C, you can see our dental reserve is about a hundred and thirty thousand going into the year. Our health insurance reserve is about four, a little over four hundred thousand that came from last year, and that's basically, you try and build the reserve up so that you can even out health insurance fluctuations, and if you've looked at all what's going on in the health insurance industry, you know, health insurance costs are, are increasing significantly. Our projection for this year, the dental reserve typically runs, you know, twenty, ten, twenty thousand dollars to the positive, and that's where we put it in. The health insurance reserve, we've got projected to have a couple hundred thousand to the positive. You know, we want to try and build that up the first couple of years here. Basically, we're running okay through the first ten months of the year, not great, not bad. We'll probably have, we'll have an increase in the premium for next year, which goes on to the, the budget, but I've got projected a couple hundred thousand dollars. There's, you know, month to month is one of my most anticipated reports coming out, how much were our claims for the month, because they do swing quite a bit depending on where it is. But we have been running, and I work closely with our insurance consultants, and we have been running a little bit in the positive this year, so I guess right now, we're, we're okay. So I can say that on that. If we go up to the next line, the trust fund is seventy-two, that's basically two scholarships that we have, controlling documents, the Anx that and the Malware Scholarships. Basically, what we take in in revenue, we pay out in scholarships. It's a little bit negative this year, because we put some money in, in CDs to lock in, and they don't come due until the end of the, after the fiscal year, so we'll get that interest at that time, we can't book it before then. So that, it typically runs into positive. The next line, sixty-seven, it's a little more complicated this year. That's the Fund Oh Seven, the Debt Redemption Fund, basically to make the payment on the bond that was sold to build the new school back in two thousand and fifteen, sixteen area. We have a little bit of money in the reserve, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, I guess it's a good amount. Basically, columns D and E are the levy money that comes in, and the column E is the payment that goes out. Typically, the levy and the payment are, are close to the same. If you remember last, geez, it's been a while now, January, February, we refinanced, or did a refunding on the bond. That was basically forty-eight million dollars that kind of got, that then kind of got put in on investment for two years, and the interest off of that will pay the payment on the borrowings for the two years until the two thousand and fifteen bond is, be able to pay off. There's a call provision for the first ten years, and, you know, with where interest rates were back in when we did that, and where they are now, there would have not been another chance to do that. So it was actually, it's going to work out to be a pretty good thing, you know, with where rates are at. So I just put in to try and keep things clarified on lines sixty-eight and sixty-nine, that there's, there's another forty-eight million dollars that's sitting there, both on the asset side and the liability side, and they basically, it'll wash out in, in two years. The, the old bond will be gone, and the new bond will be there, and then the levy will pay that one. Lines fifty-eight through sixty-three are Fund Oh Four, which is basically the Community Service Fund. There's, there's three or four components to that fund, actually. Line fifty-nine is the community education portion of it. A lot of the classes Tammy was talking about and those type of things are in there. And the next two lines are the early childhood family education and the restrict, and the school readiness programs. You know, as we've talked, you know, at length the last couple of years, before COVID, the community education portion, you know, was a little bit more positive, because there's more classes and people were out more. I think that fund, we're showing a little bit of a negative this year, expenses over revenues. Typically, that's how the budgets worked on that one, and we've came in a little bit closer, and that one is pretty much a lot of times break even. The next couple items, the school readiness has been running, as we've talked, a negative for the past few years, and we, I tried to break that out a little bit more this year. You know, that, that's, that's where the numbers are at. I'm thinking it's going to come in a little bit better, but not cover up the complete negative on that. The, the bright shining one is actually Food Service Fund Oh Two. We came into the year with a one-point-two balance. That has to do a lot with that meals were paid for the last couple of years by the, by the government. We're actually need to spend that down, we're required to spend that down. We can always only carry so much money over in that fund, so we're, we're trying to spend some down. This year, if you remember, in past years, we were contracted with Avions, and this year, we're running our own system, so it's really hard to run. I have no basis for numbers for five years, because Avions ran all, and we just paid for the meals. This year, we're paying for the food and everything else, you know, and salaries and, and stuff directly, so, and then we're also doing an improvement to the north, or the, excuse me, the middle school cafeteria this summer. We're required kind of to do this and spend the money down, because it's federal funds, and we don't really have a choice. They didn't, usually it's only three months you carry it over. They changed it to six months, and we were over the six months actually last year, too. So that's why that one is, is down some. So that basically takes care of all the, I don't want to say the minor funds, but all, everything but Fund Oh One. And then if we go up to lines forty-five through forty-eight, that is basically, it's actually in Fund Five, we, we separated out to Fund Five, but it's actually in Fund Oh One, when we report it to the state. There's two components to that. Line forty-six is the LTFM funds. If you remember, pretty much every August, we approved the LTFM plan. When this program started, this is a great program for the school districts. It gives us some money to be able to fix the buildings. When it started four or five years ago, or maybe longer than that now, we improved one of the roofs, because it needed to be done, so we went, the fund allows you to go negative, to just basically spend ahead, and so we were, you know, six, seven figures negative, and we've been working that down over the past few years. If you see, we were down to eighty-seven thousand dollars after negative for last year's audit. That was a lot lower than we had projected to be. Part of the reason for that is because some of the projects got done in July and August of last year, and with the way that, our cutoff is June thirtieth, so they got paid afterwards, so that's part of the reason you're seeing the, the negative number go up. That's still less than we had planned for a couple of years ago. Line forty-seven is the operating capital. That's basically to buy hard assets, curriculum, those type of things. We get the special money, we keep, you need to keep separate for that. The hundred and thirty-nine thousand is kind of a, we transferred that in from the general fund to pay for the one-to-one program with the iPads and those type of items. So that one's, we're sitting with a positive there. This year, we didn't have a whole lot of curriculum expenses. If you remember, a couple, probably two, three years ago, we had two major curriculum updates, which, you know, we paid for out of that, and, and that gets spent down. So that's kind of Fund Oh Five, and those, those two items are kept separate, or they're, they're required to be kept separate. Everything kind of above line forty-one goes into a lot of the general fund. Line one is the unassigned portion, and we'll, we'll come back to that a little bit. Then lines ten, our lines twelve through all the rest of them are restricted funds, or are other type of money that we've assigned to different items over the year. Assigned funds, you can move back out, depending on, on what the board and the superintendent decide. The restricted and the assigned ones, they have to be used for specific purposes, such as the student activities. You know, we have assigned some money for severance, the VIBA trust, which is a retirement plan. We had, and then line thirty-two, I'm glad that we're being done with, that's finally the end of the bond from five, six years ago. And then line thirty-three, we've talked about it length over the time, is the, the money we assign for operating the new school, which is, is kind of now our bridge to get to where we're going. It all kind of comes together with line ten up there. We started the year with a four-point-five million dollar unassigned fund. The projection, and these are numbers are on before some of the money in and out, the transfers, revenues of just under thirty million. Our expenditures will be about thirty-one and a half. We're going to project it to transfer about a million dollars in. The majority of that is the eight hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars remaining in that assigned for operating the new school fund, and then there's also some other funds getting transferred in there. We're projected to have about a three-point-eight million dollar fund balance at the end of the year. I ran the, the budget similar to what we've done in the other years, especially on the expenses. We're running at about the same percentage through March as we have other years, and with that, we've usually came in under budget, and if things don't, if things carry on the way they have been, we should come in a little bit better on the expenditures. The reason we kind of do that is there's, there's a few, you know, a few things that can severely affect your expenses, the last part, you know, care and treatment facilities, or those type of expenses that we don't, we can't really totally plan for, so I try and budget enough in there. And a little bit more to explain it is page two. That kind of takes the ins and outs, the revenue we got last year on line four oh two. You know, we had a lot of COVID money come in and out, different, there's been, I don't know, there's probably been ten, twelve different COVID funds, and each one has a different set of rules on it. In a nutshell, basically, we, we got a lot of funds in last year, and we're getting, and we don't have them this year, and we got about another eight, one-point-eight or two million dollars worth of COVID funds this year. dollars worth of COVID funds this year that we're, we're using up and will be pretty much out of COVID funds going into FY twenty-four next year. There's a little bit of funds left for, that are earmarked for summer school and stuff that we'll probably spend up in July and August that we can use to help fund those programs next year. But that's kind of the remaining portion of it. Um, the other stuff on here comes in and out is some of the bigger items that we, we spent money on or changed from the year before that we know about that were changed on, you know, the actual budget. Kinda to, to summarize it all is, is in the middle there, lines four twenty-three and four twenty-four are estimated revenues after all the transfers and stuff in and out is about thirty million, six hundred fifty-three thousand. That includes the eight hundred five, thirty-five thousand dollar transfer plus the COVID funds. The expenditures are about, um, thirty-one, three. So our revenue, I guess, is a nega- is a negative seven hundred thirty-three thousand, which decreases the fund balance. And if you go down to line four thirty-nine, we're at about three point eight million dollars or about forty-five days and about twelve percent of revenues. So, um, you know, we're going back a decent amount this year, even with the COVID funds. And, uh, you know, I'm hoping that we come in a little bit better. I was probably, I, I, hopefully I'm still conservative on the revenue side, but it's probably a little more aggressive than we've been in the other year, especially when it comes to special education. I kinda got in there what, what the state's telling me, but that number isn't finalized until about this time next year because of tuition billing and some of the other stuff that goes on with special education funding. You know, it can go up, can go down depending upon and, and some of that's out of our control because it depends on other schools' expenses where our students are. And, uh, you know, it's a complicated process, but I think that we should still come fairly close to hitting on the revenue side. And like I said, expenses, we're, we're running as the budget as we have before. So, um, I tried to cover everything as thoroughly as I could. Is there, you know, it's, it's negative. Um, and, you know, I guess I don't know all I have to say. You know, if you got questions or whatever and, you know, I tried to lay it out there as good as, as good as I could.
So I hear that thirty million dollar budget is complicated.
It is. And, um, I just wanted to reiterate as well that when we adopted the budget, we knew that we would be dipping into the reserves. Um, and then with some unexpected changes with COVID and, and how those funds lined up, uh, it just was more complicated than usual. And I know that Bee and Tim have put in many, many, many hours, um, preparing this, uh, document for you and kind of all the time, just keeping track of where we are and making sure that we keep it between the rails.
You know, I, I guess a couple of things we did not mention, you know, inflation obviously played a big part in this year's, um, and hopefully we have enough in there. You know, the, the, the gas bill and some of the, the heating oil, heating and stuff has been significantly higher in a couple of items there. Um, one thing that has offset a little bit of that is we, this year, we finally got a little bit of interest revenue again because, you know, the, there's a little bit of interest to be paid that's not zero point zero zero anymore. Um, so we, we're getting a little bit back there, um, and tried to take advantage of any opportunities we've had on, on that side too. But, you know, inflation has been another factor that is, is a little bit out of our control. So.
I missed the number, the last bit of the COVID funds that are running out for, is it this year or for next year?
We'll have about, I think, according to projections and it, it may change depending upon if we have the right kind of expenses this year. We'll probably have between a hundred and two hundred thousand dollars left that you need to spend on, on summer school activities or, or other things. That, that's the main portion. So we'll have that to carry over next year and use, um, in July and August or June. And that one, they may even be able to carry over another year, I'm not sure, but I, I guess the plan would be to use them up in FY twenty-four. So.
And there was like one point three or one point eight that we're using?
Oh, we're using about one point, I think it's just under two million this year that we've got, um, that are, you know, one-time funds.
Right.
Yeah, that's the S R, um, three money for those of you that have tracked any, any of that. It's, you know, they started S R one and I, 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 I apologize, I don't remember what all the acronyms are for, but it was S R one was, was a pretty good amount of money. S R two was a pretty good amount of money. And S R three actually has been a pretty good amount. Um, it came with a lot more strings, um, honestly, as far as what we could use it for and items like that. And we, we kinda used up S R one, you know, give a little history, two years ago, we used S R two last year and we're using S R three this year. Um, you know, we've tried to sustain things as much as we can and, and try and get the expenses where they qualify, um, you know, that, that we, we match what the program's intended for. So, um, and there's also been a lot of, um, you know, stuff earmarked for your summer school or test, test, you know, COVID testing was a, a separate program. Um, there's some homeless money, you know, like I said, there's probably, if you look on here, you know, each one of those fin- finance numbers, they're a different program. You know, we probably removed the first five, we removed from, from the budget, where money is that we got last year and then we added, and I said, this year, we're gonna get monies from five or six different programs. And then, uh, you know, we had some in other ones back in two years before that. So, um, it's, it's been a good source of funding. It's, it's sustained us through some, um, but it's going away.
Right.
Yeah. So I just wanna make sure that I have this right. On line thirty-three, which is the eight hundred and thirty-five thousand that we had carried over and had kinda sitting there for operating the new high school, there is no more after that.
Nope.
That was, we had, for those who've been on the board for a while, there was that fund that we had for when the new school was built and we had it just in case. And I just, yeah. That was, that, that worked out really well. We just, we don't have any more funds there anymore after this year.
Yep. We kinda.
So we, we, we used everything we had there and, and part of why I'm talking is I've been asked why, why we have such a big reserve still with doing cuts still. I mean, we've used pretty much every pot that we could. Our reserve is down seven hundred thousand roughly. We have no idea if that's, I mean, where, where the legislators are gonna come in.
Right.
So it, it was, it was a tough year. How about that?
We, you know, I, I think we've went over, I, I think we, I put together, Bee really helped me put together a lot of comparisons on the fund balance for, you know, those type of things. And we're, you know, I know I get this question a lot and we ask the auditors where you should be and they, they'll always say, or anybody will say, you know, it's up to you guys to manage your business. There's no, there's no set thing. We're probably going into this year, we're right about in the middle as far as fund balances. Um, and we'll probably, after this year, will be not in the middle anymore. We'll, we'll, we'll be down because those, the, the, like the assigned funds, that, that counts for, for those numbers. So we'll be in the bottom half this year, how far we drop compared to other schools. It's difficult to say because I don't know how, where other schools are at. I mean, you read, a lot of schools are making cuts or negative. Um, there's other schools that are not, um, but that, that's, that's a good point, Tim. And we did put that money away because we had some increased enrollments. You know, enrollment, the one year, I can't remember, it was probably six, seven years ago, we jumped up a hundred, a hundred and some kids and we, we, I don't wanna say squirreled the money away, but we put away for a rainy day and obviously with COVID and, and now the drop in enrollment we had, it, it was a rainy day.
Yep. Thanks.
Yeah, you, you don't have to understand school finance to understand that if you have less kids, we're gonna have less money and we're gonna have to make adjustments.
Yep. And, you know, we've talked a long time, you know, school fin- finances about enrollment, enrollment, enrollment. You know, I mean, there's a lot of other things that go into it, but rising enrollment of a two, three percent every year is, 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 is really good.
Which we had for a long time.
Exactly. And now we're having a drop of the, the same thing. And there's, you know, our, we, we had that enrollment study, we have some less kids coming in too. So that's, that's really what's affecting some of this also, along with inflation and a couple of other things.
Yeah. Other questions for Tim?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Tim. Um, so we need to.
I'll make a motion to revise, that we accept the revisions of the twenty-three, fiscal year twenty-three budget.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
So basically, is we're just adopting that?
What Tim just shared.
Cow.
Yep.
I mean, so we don't have to be specific in what the actual revisions are in the motion and just go.
Right. Correct. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, Tim. Um, revisions to the fiscal year twenty-three budget have been approved. Uh, next up, and item number three, consider the non-renewal of probationary teacher contracts. Um, this is going to be a resolution.
Correct. And, you know, this, this is a tough one. It's never easy to make, um, reductions and we, we hate to see teachers go, uh, but in order to keep that balanced budget, you know, it's our fiscal responsibility to, to make these reductions. And, uh, we're hopeful that in the future, uh, these, these folks can find their way back, but these are all probationary teachers who have been in their first three years of their positions with us. Um, and so tonight we are recognizing that we are not going to be able to renew their contracts for next year. There are, uh, eleven names on this list and it is our resolution, so it should probably be read into the record.
Yep.
There's a, a new sheet that was handed up. In the packet on board book is, there are eleven.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, so the resolution in front of us, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number five oh-eight, pursuant to the Minnesota statutes one twenty-two A dot forty subdivision five and the district master agreement that the teaching contracts of the listed individuals, probationary teachers in Independent School District Number five oh-eight are hereby non-renewed at the close of the current twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. Be it further resolved, a written notice, um, to be sent to each teacher listed regarding their non-renewal of their contracts. And conversations have been had with all individuals on that list by administrative leadership. So that is the resolution in front of us. Can we read the names? Uh, the non-renewal of teacher contracts apply to the following. Kent Bass, Sarah Corbin, Emily Elverum, Stephanie Evans, Rachel Ryan, Kinsey Urban, Ethan Sindelir, Marilyn Stefan, Mary Tobar, Matthew Wheatz, and Melissa Baumgart. So we need a motion.
I move that we approve the non-renewal of probationary teacher contracts.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions?
I have a, just a, a further question because should we put in this resolution the fact that it's due to declining enrollment in financial considerations or is that just in the letter that's sent to the?
That, that is included in the, in the letter, in the notification.
I mean, I'd like those individuals to have some documentation that wasn't performance related.
It is in the, in the letter that goes in.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I just wanna thank every individual on this list and, um, this isn't something that we do, uh, easily, um, but as we heard with the revised budget, it is necessary for our district and I just wish everyone the best and appreciate their time and service to St. Peter.
Yep. I echo that with, there's some fantastic educators on that list and thank you to the, to all those who had to help have those conversations, including the St. Peter Education Association. Um, painful, not an easy time, but part of what we have to do given our current situation.
And I would like to just reiterate what Director Kaut said, um, that this is not based on any performance and each and every one of these individuals can be, can be, um, reassured in that factor.
Other discussion? Yeah. Uh, so we have a motion and a second and this is a resolution, so we need to do roll call vote. Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Mr. Lokensgar?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Kaut?
Aye.
Mr. Dixon?
Aye.
Ms. Martins?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
The next, uh, resolution, uh, is a proposal for unrequested leaves of absence of tenured teacher contracts. Uh, this is a process that is laid out in both state statute and our district master agreement. Um, this is the initial action that proposes placing employees on U L A followed by a fourteen-day waiting period for them to request a hearing. If they feel that any portion of the master agreement or statute is not being followed, they can request a, a hearing to present their, their perspective. Um, after following that fourteen-day period, at the next board meeting, you would take a subsequent action, um, which would finalize this process. So this is a first step. It's the proposal of, um, placing three employees on unrequested leave of absence.
Uh, so this is also a resolution, so I will read it. Uh, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number five oh-eight as follows, that it is proposed, the individuals listed below, tenured teachers in the Independent School District Number five oh-eight be placed on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits at the close of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. Said action is taken in accordance with the district master agreement and pursuant to Minnesota statute one twenty-two A dot forty subdivision ten, under the grounds described in said statute and which are specifically as follows, financial limitations and/or discontinuance of positions. Uh, be it further resolved, that written notice of proposed placement on unrequested leave, together with a copy of this resolution, be forwarded to said teachers and that an affidavit of the same be placed in their personnel file with a copy of the notice and resolution. The proposed unrequested leaves of absence apply to the following tenured teachers, Jennifer Curtis, Emily Pins, and Paola Rotabak.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, discussion, questions?
I'd just like to say the same thing to the individuals on this list, that, uh, we sincerely appreciate their time in the district and that this is an incredibly hard decision and our, our thoughts are with them and, and again, thanks for everything they've done for the district and their kids.
Indeed. Thank you. Other comments? Discussion, we have a motion and a second. Uh, also a resolution, so we need to go around the table, roll call. Mr. Uh, signify aye or opposed?
Aye.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Kaut?
Aye.
Ms. Martins?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution passes, um, to place those teachers on unrequested leave of absence.
If I could just take a moment, um, I wanted to recognize along with these two positions, there were two, uh, non-renewals included in the consent agenda, but because they aren't covered by a district master agreement or by statute, uh, the process is different. Uh, but certainly the same applies, uh, to the two positions, the facilities use coordinator, um, currently Barb Regner, and then the community outreach coordinator, Heather De Hayes. Uh, both have done outstanding work for the district. Um, and unfortunately, with their financial position, uh, we just need to make reductions and, uh, I'm not sure how we'll, how we'll be covering all of the, all of the things these, these two people did, both for our communications and Barb with the, the facilities operations and all that she did with managing the facilities use and just jumping in, uh, wherever she's needed. Certainly, um, I just wanna recognize their service to the district as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right. The next agenda items, consider approval of. All right, the next agenda items, consider approval of bids for proposals for summer projects. Hi, Sharon.
Hi. So, um, we are working on our summer projects, and we got some bids for some of the projects that we have planned. There's two projects, the door at, um, the middle schools for securing the, the band room or the choir room. That one and the, the bid proposals for, um, the high school washer and dryer project. Those aren't done yet, we're still waiting on information for those. But the ones that we did get, um, bids for was the ceiling tile replacement, and, um, the ceiling, or the, the lighting in, in the middle school. And so, you have the bids there that show what the cost, what they, what they bid the project, and one was, I was surprised, was quite a bit higher, um, but, uh, Twin City Acoustics came in a lot lower, and that's the company that we worked with in the past, and so, that's the company that I would like to work with again, they know, you know, the school, they know us. The electric that came in, it had twenty-three thousand seven eighty-five in that work, um, there is no other bids on there. Nobody showed up, nobody showed up on the day that was requested for them to come and do bids. And we also have the small floors, which is the, at South High School, I mean, South, sorry, South School, and, uh, North, and the middle school media center, there's three little offices, and those are in there. Our solar panel project is going to go forward, and that's going to start after school gets out. They wanted to start earlier, but we asked them to start after school, you know, because of graduations and all those things happening. There's a couple of other things in there that, that I wanted to tell you about that, um, there's one called this, this testing, where they test the fields so that they can make sure the fields are safe for the, the athletes, or something, if that's in this, that, that helps, um, and, and the information we get from there, the, our grounds crew can modify the field, whether it be more watering or aerating, something so that they, it's to reduce the impact, when, when students are playing in sports.
Yeah, I think that's great.
And, yeah, and we've done that for, I guess, a few years, and this is a two-year contract, and I, I brought it to you because, um, you know, it's, it's a renewal, and I just wanted you to know that. We also were awarded a grant that Tim had, Tim Regner had got for, for, um, air purifiers, and we, we looked at the amount of money that we had, and we decided that we were going to use those, what would the best for use for those, that, that money, and, um, with what we had. So, we decided to put the air purifiers in the reception areas of all the schools, because that's where more, you know, the outside, you know, is, you know, introduced, and in the early childhood area, classrooms, because, you know, they're little, and they're, they have, they also have two different groups that come in during the day, so we thought air purification might, they might benefit from there. I think that's all I have on this first, I'm just saying.
Thank you, this looks like a good list.
Is that, just curious, that impact testing on the fields?
Yes.
Is that a requirement, is that a state high school league, is that a department of education?
No, it's not a requirement, it's, um, it's just something that is good, like, a kind of a proactive kind of thing.
Just a best practice.
Yeah, so. Any other questions?
No other questions?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for alerting us.
Motion to approve the bids for proposals for summer projects.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. Those in favor, uh, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, approve the bids for summer projects, thank you, Sharon. Next up is consideration of policies for approval with a single reading, we've got a list of them.
Yes, we do, we are to the point now where we will be reviewing, all the new policies are in place. So, all of the newness is, is gone. So, now, we're to the point where we'll be going through a third of the policies each year, so that every three years, we've seen all of our policies. So, this month, we went through the one-hundreds and two-hundreds, because they're pretty small, um, sections, and all but one of them, um, have immaterial changes, and so, we'd go through with just the single reading.
I think Director Kaut had something.
I'd like to pull two-ten from that list. And the reason for that is, the legislature last year changed the limit from eight thousand to twenty thousand, that a director could make outside of that.
And does it still say?
It still says eight thousand in the, so I don't know if we could pull it and amend it, and then pass it with everything else, or what the procedures would be.
Yeah, why don't you pull it, and we'll just bring it back next month?
Yeah, I think that would be a material change, so we should do a first reading at it, approve at the second.
And it was your recommendation to just change that to follow state statute?
Yeah.
Correct.
Right.
Don't have a number in it.
Yep.
Thank you for catching that.
Yeah. Otherwise, I've heard nothing from anyone.
I'll make a motion to, uh, with the exception of policy two-ten, consider the rest of the policies for approval with this single reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, to approve all at first reading with the exception of policy two-ten, which we'll work on and bring back. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, uh, those policies, with the exception of two-ten, have been approved. Thank you, Mr. Kaut, for finding that. Information items, the first is summer programming 2023, Ms. Prapke, Ms. Sikora.
Summer is in sight, right? With the little snow yesterday.
Didn't feel like it yesterday.
But we know it's, we're, we already know it's coming. So, I had mentioned at our board meeting last month that we no longer qualify for Read and Feed summer food program, and so, there, nothing has changed there, um, we did get some information related to, um, free meals for all, and that will begin in, in the new school year, but that does not include summer food. So, we received some clarification there. We will be holding our targeted services Stars Academy again this year, K eight, and that will be housed, K four will be housed at North Elementary, and five-eight will be housed at the middle school. And so, our hope is, based on the attendees, that we'll qualify for something called a closed enrolled site, in which if we have fifty percent of the participants qualifying for free and reduced, we can provide them with breakfast and lunch at no charge. So, it's a multi-step process, and first, we identify who those students are who are invited, then we invite them, then they register, and then we ensure that we have at least fifty percent of those students qualifying, so that we can make sure they have meals. If they don't, then we'll adjust our time so that they can eat, eat at home and get home in time for lunch, so we'll keep you posted on that one. But that program will run four weeks this summer, four days a week and four hours a day. So, our four-by-four-by-four program, and that's all, um, that's a, a self-sustaining program, in that as we have seat time for those students, that's reimbursed through targeted service funding, targeted services funding.
Can I ask a quick question about that?
Yes, for sure.
How do you, how do we determine the free and reduced lunch number for that? Is that based on prior forms being submitted, or, or is submission of those forms part of participating?
That's a great question, so that would be based on the twenty-two-twenty-three school year. So, we provide a list to the district office, which it's a confidential list of students who are participating. We don't know who qualifies or not, but they just confirm for us whether we have fifty percent or not. But it is based on this school year's data.
Great, I, I think this is a great program, I'm just worried about future years, where it's wonderful to have free lunch for all, um, but there's a cascading effect with other services and other funding that relies on that, those numbers.
And that, that is a concern, as we found out, that we do need to continue to have families fill those, um, applications out, so that will be a, a whole new, um, approach to getting that done and explaining why we still need it done, because that does provide additional funding in other areas.
Could we, uh, use some of our soup, uh, surplus in the food service budget to finance Read and Feed? Unfortunately, you cannot.
Yeah. Yeah, we've thought that a few times.
We tried.
Yeah, we tried, but unfortunately not, lots of guidelines with that federal, federal funding for food service. Um, so, along with Stars Academy, which is general education program, each site holds, um, extended school year, and those, that's for students who qualify, um, that have an IEP, and they typically show regression during breaks and that type of thing. So, then, we're able to qualify them for, um, extended school year, and that will run hopefully at the same time as targeted services, so that we can, um, really be efficient on our transportation. Uh, then, um, again, those programs, as I said, targeted services is self-sustaining, E S Y is funded partially by special education, we do provide transportation, um, and our goal is to prevent that summer learning loss and get kids, keep the kids at least, um, where they were when they left that, um, in the spring, so that when they come back in the fall, they hit the ground running. So, that's our preschool and elementary programming.
At the high school, we are going to be running credit recovery again for students that have been unsuccessful in passing a course or earning credit. Partially because of the, um, Read and Feed situation, we are changing our model a little bit. In the past, we've run courses for two weeks, and we had a morning class and an afternoon class, and so, kids could earn half a credit in the morning, half of the credit in the afternoon, and we did that twice. So, they could, if they came to every session, they could earn a full two credits in the summer, which is a lot. And so, we are going to be adjusting that a little bit, um, we're going to go, return to a three-week program with, um, a classroom eight to ten and a classroom ten to twelve, so that we can get kids out of there before they're hungry for lunch. So, it's a little bit of a shift in model, um, and so, if kids go to eight to ten and ten to twelve, they earn half a credit, that's only one credit. So, to try to increase our credits, I've got a couple of teachers willing to run a very condensed, uh, like a one-week class, where we'll try to get kids a half a credit in that time period, and they'll have to bring like a, a big lunch. Um, we are also self-sustaining, we, um, get funding from the state based on our student enrollment, so, I'm working with Emily to see if there's a way that we could get lunch just for those kids on those days. So, trying to do some creative, um, brainstorming and planning there, um, so that we can still get kids as much credit as possible this summer. Fortunately, we've had a lot of students enroll in night school, so our summer credit referrals are down just a little bit. So, um, I'm hopeful that it doesn't have a, an impact on many students, that they, that they're eligible for one and a half instead of two credits. So, still working to communicate schedules and things like that with families, I know families are antsy for dates as they're planning vacations and other things, um, so communication and registration should be coming shortly, but, um, we're still in the midst of session four of night school, so we're just, just getting there. Any questions?
Awesome, thank you for the update.
You bet.
Next up is a first reading of revisions to the policy manual.
Yes, there is one policy, now two, but, uh, just one at a time. Policy one oh four, which was titled, "School District Mission", we have added end equity statement. Based on the work that the school board did this past year in creating that equity statement, we thought it was important to include that in this policy, and so, that is what we have done, is revised it to include the equity statement.
Thank you. Questions, comments, anything? All right. We are at reports. Building principals. I hope you all carpooled this stuff.
We got the whole crew.
We got the whole, yeah.
The whole crew.
You're sure we could fit six rounds?
I think overwhelmed is the word.
Well, in early childhood, last week was a fabulous week to be outside. That, that, we almost did walk-throughs on the playground, because that's where it was happening, um, so that was exciting to see. We also, uh, before spring break, wrapped up our third early childhood screening, I report on that, um, throughout the year. We had about thirty-two students, children, come, um, and we had four referrals, which is a really good screening. You know, that's the idea of screening, is we have comes, kids come in, we do a mini-assessment, and if there areas of concern, um, we offer families, um, an assessment, a full assessment, and we had four of those out of our thirty-two, so we are catching kids, which is great. We also have our Springfield trips in, lining up, and so, that's exciting. We're taking some trips for early childhood special education to South for some transition planning. They get to see the classrooms, they get to see the playground, which is also very, the most important part. And then, we're going to Follenstein Park, which is an inclusive playground in Mankato, and so, that's a trip that they look forward to every year, as well as some park trips here in St. Peter. Um, and then registrations for the fall, we still have some openings, our morning classes are filling up quickly, but we would encourage families to, to contact our office or just go to our website and register for those classes for fall, because we want to, want to get those filled up soon.
All right, and to follow in fashion, like early childhood, we sent the snow pants home. So, we have officially, officially declared winter is over, um, you still need to wear coats, but no more snow pants at South. So, um, hopefully, that we won't get ninety-degree weather like we had last week, but we would love to entertain some seventy-degree weather. Again, like early childhood, our field trips have begun, first grade, um, is going to the play over in New Ulm, and kindergarten, each one of those classrooms, they've been rotating, going to their, um, Mankato Children's Museum. So, it's always a wonderful field trip when you don't have to say, "Be quiet, don't touch", and, you know, you just let them do what kids do best, which is explore and have fun. So, um, they've really enjoyed those trips. We are also busy organizing our summer programs and continuing to enroll students for kindergarten next year, so if you have not yet enrolled, or you need assistance in enrolling, just don't hesitate to call South, and we'll make sure that we can find some answers for you. That's it.
Very good.
Agreements from North Elementary, we're all business, no field trips going on at North right now, all business. MCA is going on right now, we're about, actually, it kind of, kind of is true. Uh, we're about halfway through the MCA testing for third and fourth grade. It, it's pretty quiet there, it kind of sent out a little principal's challenge to make sure, uh, when they're doing their MCA performance, we call it. Um, it kind of sounds like movie theater around there in the hallways, and it does, the kids always step up to that challenge, and they're doing great about the halfway point for reading and math for third grade. Uh, also, right in the planning, uh, for transition, for, um, handing off Ms. Zelke's first graders to second grade, so our, um, social workers do a great job coordinating, um, with South staff. Basically, how we do that is the first grade classes come over, like, three of them will come over one day during the day, and they're kind of trained in as far as like finding their way around North with their homeroom teacher, and then that evening, then we invite, uh, about half the families for the open house, and they, their job is to, um, show their parents, their family around North for the evening, um, and kind of make a night of it, there'll be, uh, some pizza sales and stuff in the cafeteria, and, uh, they got a passport that they have to fill out to get in, um, and check off all the tasks that are on their list. So, there's two nights of that, it'll be May ninth and May eleventh, starting at five o'clock. Also, uh, we have the North Spring Play coming up, Wizard of Oz, uh, quite the cast, there's two casts. So many kids were interested, we couldn't turn them away, so there'll be two showings, um, April twenty-fifth and twenty-seventh, at six o'clock in the theater, on the stage with the lights on, see if we can fire up those North lights, blow the dust off them a little bit. And there is dust, there is dust on the spotlights, uh, but they're doing a great job, the director is Mr. Lenhoff, they've been practicing for quite a while, so they'll be ready to go. And then, the Kindness Retreat was a huge success down at Johnson Hall, thanks to the social workers, fourth grade team. National Honor Society showed up, they did, they always do a great National Honor Society showed up. They always do a great job. They facilitate the small groups. There are probably twenty, twenty-five National Honor Society members, so. And they always talk about, "I remember when we did the Kindness Retreat. This is great." And that's been going on for as long as I can remember, pushing thirty years. And that Youth Frontiers puts that on. And then Mankato Clinic actually donates all the funds for that. It's a grant. So we want to thank them for funding it every year. They've been asking. It's a great event. The kids remember for a long time.
All right, last week was a really busy week at the middle school. Lots going on. We'll start out, we had Project for Teens visit our eighth-grade social studies classes. Project for Teens taught our students about healthy and unhealthy relationships. And if you've ever seen or haven't ever seen Project for Teens in action, it's really cool. Like, we do a really nice job, I think, as educators in keeping the interest of kids. But when high school kids walk into a middle school classroom, holy cow, they are just like movie stars. It's a combination of role-playing, small group, and kind of some scenario-based learning for kids. Miss Moore's seventh and eighth-grade PE classes did kind of a cool thing. It was a first for us. They had Minnesota Walk Bike Fun Bicycle Safety Program, drop off some bikes. And that's funded through Minnesota Department of Education's Safe Routes to School Program. And every student got a bike, every student got a helmet. They started off nice and easy around the football field parking lot, and then they worked their way all the way out to the high school Community Spirit Park. So kids learned some bicycle safety through that. It was a lot of fun. Lastly, last week, our seventh and eighth-grade avid students went on a college field trip. They went to Minnesota State, Mankato, and South Central College. And the purpose of that trip is really give them a taste of what they're really working for, which is that college-bound experience. And then I would like to give an update on History Day. The state competition is this weekend at University of Minnesota. We had eight students qualify for the state competition. This year's theme was frontiers in history. We had Calvin Coolman. His project was discovery of nuclear fusion. Lucia Pennon, her project was to the moon and back, the space race. Olivia Mish and Michaela Guth did the Wilmer Eight Bank Strike. Jalen Yost and Andy Tarrington did Elizabeth Blackwell, opening the medical profession to women. Molly Weber and Margot Letts did, I always say the name wrong. Is it Mari Curie? Am I saying that right? Marie. It's spelled funny. Her discoveries changed, how her discoveries changed science. So congratulations to those guys. This weekend.
Very cool. Well, as I mentioned, we are in our fourth session of night school right now. And we have thirty-six students, and in one week, we had two students already finish credit. And I think that that weather was a real motivating factor. They wanted to get outside. The kids were submitting things over the weekend and all kinds of stuff. So at Rock Bend, we've been very busy. In the classroom, students are working really hard on that credit recovery as we're nearing mid-quarter, fourth quarter already. Kids are really watching those transcript numbers. Our Edge Annuity, which is our online credit recovery program, kids are really completing courses, again, far more quickly, probably because they want to get outside. And I'm sure that everyone else wanted to mention this or maybe just forgot, but we've been doing that Character Strong pilot out at Rock Bend. And I'm really surprised at the high school response. They're really enjoying it. And I've walked in on days that it's not in the schedule and they're doing the activities. So that's going really, really well. I think because we always have new students coming in and out at Rock Bend, those team builders are just really popular. Last week, we had an event with adolescent chemical wellness advocates. They came out, served pizza, and they talked about chemical use in the community and among high school students, which was a really great experience for our kids. They really enjoyed having those folks out there. And in two weeks, we have Kada coming to talk about healthy and unhealthy relationships with our Rock Bend students. At Oshawa, again, we have a lot of students in and out, so they are also using Character Strong and enjoying that. It's brought just a new dynamic to the classroom. But right now, they are kind of halfway through their quarter-four electives. And so our art students just did a really neat project with Andy Warhol, and they did a really cool building connectedness project. So our middle schoolers are loving art right now. That's kind of been the highlight in our school, so. Great, go ahead.
Obviously, at the high school, we're ramping up to graduation. It's really in full swing now, thanks to Jana and her credit recovery program. We're getting a lot of them through. But this is the time of the year, though, when we do start to have student meetings with those who maybe have to pass every single class that they're in and complete credit recovery. Because those can be tough conversations. And as you know, students in St. Peter who do not have enough graduation credits and requirements covered do not get to walk. So our counselors are very busy at this time of the year. I know Jana always described it as pushing them over that wall, pulling them down the other side. I had an interesting meeting. I'm a member of the Perkins Advisory Committee, the South Central Service Cooperative, and there's some exciting opportunities for us, for some funding of some CTE programming that hopefully I'll be able to talk about in a month or two. One exciting thing, we now, we have three of our CTE teachers. Mike Reiser, Gina Lilienthal, and George Schoenborn are all now licensed to teach work experience courses. And so Gina Lilienthal will be doing that for us for the first time next year. And we also might be partnering with the Service Co-op and have her do some of that work for them as well. If she's listening, though, that will be news for her. Just wait until I talk to her tomorrow morning. In other, I just got a flyer from Habitat, and St. Peter is currently building its twenty-eighth Habitat House, which I think is really very cool. And all those houses are in our community and bringing in and keeping families. Another fun fact, I just heard from Scott Robinson, who has taken on that program from Warren Peterson. Last year's home was appraised at over three hundred thousand dollars. And our kids are, our twelve kids who built that house last year, which I think is really impressive. Back to Gina Lilienthal, they are, her classes are partnering with the city and they're starting wildflower plants in the greenhouse right now for a city park project. And then lastly, I know that I speak for all of my principal colleagues. The last month has been a little bit hard, and we hate to say goodbye to all of those teachers on the list. They will be missed by everybody.
I just want to thank you all for that work. I think, you know, we approve things at meetings, but the hours that went into that, and that's not, not work that you really want to do, but it's necessary. And the other work and the instruction and the kids, those things don't stop. And instruction and building culture and taking time to do that, but also continuing to move all the other things forward is really important and appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Granza.
My turn. I wanted to start off, kind of putting a spotlight back on to the consent agenda. There were some retirements in tonight's agenda as well that I wanted to mention. Barb Fortier from South, who I believe has been with us for about ten years. Head cook, Mary Thompson, who's been with us. Long time. And also Kristy Davis, assistant to the A.D. at the high school. And Marlene Wilson, who has been with us for thirty years. And so all of those individuals have served our district well, and we wish them a very happy retirement. And I agree, there's been some tough topics for us in the past month. And this has been a tough, a tough meeting for a lot of reasons. It's never easy to make reductions to budget or to talk about negative budgets or to tell employees who've been an asset to the district that they're no longer going to have a position with us. And I know there's been many difficult conversations over the past month for all of us. And as difficult as it is, as it's been said earlier in this meeting, with fewer students and funding that hasn't kept up with the rate of inflation, we have a fiscal responsibility to maintain a balanced budget. And these reductions will help us to do that. But we are very thankful for the service of all the people that have been listed. And we wish them well as they seek new opportunities. In fact, we've already heard from some of them that they've already accepted new positions in surrounding districts. And several of them have, well, maybe we shouldn't tell the other districts that, but they said, "When we get the chance, we want to come back." So, and we hope the best for them. As the legislative session continues, it is scheduled to end in six weeks, May twenty-second. There's rumors of them ending early, but, you know, we'll just hope that they finish because that hasn't been the case the last few times. The omnibus bills for both the House and the Senate are out, and the conference committee will convene soon to try to patch together an agreement between the two. Between them is sitting right at about the assumptions that we've built into our budget. And so when it does come through, and if it's a four and a two in inflation and a cross subsidy or it's closer to the Senate's, we've already made those assumptions that that money is coming. Now, if it goes above and beyond that, I'll just, I'll be thrilled. But as you heard tonight, we're not in a position where if the legislature makes these changes, it will be a windfall for the district. It will put us exactly where we need to be for the coming year with the reductions that we've made. So we'll be watching that closely. And although the weather recently has felt more like summer, I know that we've had a lot of conversations about our HVAC systems. And I know last week, some of our classrooms got up into the nineties. And so they took their classes outside because it's really tough to learn when it's ninety degrees in a room. And so we know that they are working this week, and we don't need them. So the heat is back on, for now. But we aren't even at the halfway mark of the fourth quarter, as we mentioned. And this has been an especially busy time of year with state testing and spring activities. And it's just added to our usual busy schedule. But we're gearing up to ensure that we have a strong finish to the year. And even though there's been all these tough conversations when I go into the buildings and get into classrooms, it is still about learning in a positive environment and great things happening every single day. So I just want to thank everybody for their continued efforts and their understanding.
Thank you. Board members around the table. Let's start over there.
Well, I just, the main purpose of the meetings tonight is one that I didn't want to have to do when I came on board. I believe that the positions, it's been done as gracefully as could be done.
But I also want to reach out to those middle school kids who are going up to State History Day this weekend because that's not something that St. Peter has done all the time, and wish them luck. And if you're really bored Saturday, that is a great event to come see kids working hard.
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate a couple of kids. I understand Ram Hill received a huge scholarship today from the Naval ROTC program. And David Marlowe and Lilian Hughes going to the speech tournament. No one mentioned that, so I thought we should probably mention that. To piggyback on the legislative stuff, MSBA said in the chat room last week that they're still pushing for five and five and fifty percent on the special ed cross subsidy. And those two items combined would be a million, or a billion, seven hundred and thirty million. So the target's two-point-two, so there would still be a sizable amount of money available for other things. The other thing that they're really concerned about are the items that are included in pending legislation that are not in the omnibus bills but are in labor relations and so forth. The unemployment for non-licensed hourly people for the summer months. And they're guessing because they don't have real good figures, but they were thinking that that's going to be like a hundred and thirty-five million bucks. And we can't levy for it. It can't be included in our other unemployment levies. So it said that they figured it would be about a hundred and thirty dollars, I think, per ADM. So that's a sizable chunk when you talk about that. And then they talk about the paid sick leave and the safe and sick leave. And those two combined are about another sixty-two dollars per ADM. So there are some items there. And then some other things that they're looking at are making all pre-K and early learning programs, teachers of that meet the definition of teacher, which then means they would possibly be included in the bargaining unit, which would mean then we'd have to come up with some language to govern the special circumstances that those individuals are dealing with. The terms and conditions, stuff that they've talked about adding, the class size, we already have language on that. I mean, that's what's going to impact the student personnel ratio anyway, so. We can, it'll be interesting to see what comes out. So I guess maybe we don't want to start negotiating with them until the legislature quits because there may be all kinds of contract language that has to be changed also.
We had done the math for the unemployment. It was about three hundred thousand for our district, if that goes through. And that can't go on the unemployment levy.
That's. Thanks. Ben? All right. We have some upcoming meetings. Policy Committee on Wednesday, the twenty-sixth, at four P.M. in the district office. We have a study session for the board on Monday, May first, at six-thirty P.M. in the middle school media center. Education Committee is on Tuesday, the ninth, at one P.M. in the district office. Business Committee is Wednesday, May tenth, at four P.M. in the district office. And then how about we come back here in about a month, May fifteenth, full meeting of the school board again, six-thirty P.M. in this very room. That's all. Any other meetings I missed?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion. All those in favor? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.